Are you okay with that? You want to do that at the top one or bottom?
Yeah, man.
Do we need a motion to add it?
Can we do it?
About the guests, appoint the guests.
Okay.
Good morning. It is now ten oh two. And I would like to call the meeting to all of the Florence Board of Commissioners for the Housing Authority of Florence. At this time, we will have a roll call, starting to far right.
Calvin Robinson.
May Holmes Live.
Linda Bach Williams.
Gerard Moultrie.
Wanda Breen.
Let the record reflect, we do have a qualm. And we'll now recognize all of the guests that are here with us today, starting with our attorneys.
Jonathan Charleston.
Jose Coker.
Hi, Catherine Balthazar.
Who's that?
It's Wendy.
Repeat it again. I'm sorry. Turn the volume up.
Attorney Catherine Balthazar.
She's with us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this time.
Wayman Muffet, past Central Michigan after search. Florence County Captain.
Councilman Shaques McCall, City of Florence.
Lieutenant Maddie.
Seth Kayler with the first of three.
Jinar Sall, NBD, HCP.
Heidi Wilson, Rossford, here.
Shaw.
Austin Martin, City of Florence.
Wanda Coleman.
Uh, New Boy Taylor.
Staff.
Jennifer Manning.
Casey Moore.
Shayna Sullivan.
All right. At this time, we will now have a prayer by Reverend Wayman Muffet.
Good morning, guests.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Almighty God, God of all knowledge, God of all thoughts, all circumstance, all events, all words. You have known them from eternity past. You know all about each one of us before we were born. Before you, we are transparent. Nothing is hid from you. You know our strength and weaknesses. You know our strength all the way around. You know our hopes and despair. You know our dreams and their shadowing. You know our charity and our selfishness. May a sense of your unknowing change the way we feel, think, and act. These and all other blessings we ask in the name that is above every name, Jesus Christ, our Savior, and all of His children, say amen.
Amen. So then we want to thank you, Reverend Muffet, for coming to do the prayer for us today. At this time, we will ask City Councilman Shaques McCall to come and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Again, we want to thank City Councilman Shaques McCall for coming to lead us in the prayer. I want to pause for a moment and back up to recognition of guests. We have some new employees here. And at this time, I want to allow Dr. Um, um, Afonso Bradley to introduce these new employees to us.
Yes, uh, in the back of the room here, we have four brand-new employees of the Housing Authority of Florence. First of all, we have two new maintenance workers, and they come highly recommended. Uh, when I called you, you just stand, Mr. Dewayne Coleman and Mr. Leroy Chico Taylor. Thank you, guys, for coming. Also, um, we have two, we have a new Ross Coordinator. Uh, please stand, Mr. Isaac Wilson. Okay, and we have a brand-new supervisor of our voucher program and our Moving to Work Program. Comes all the way from Lost, uh, from Long Beach, California. He's a Florence native, Mr. Jinar Small. Thank y'all for coming.
I want to thank the new employees on behalf of the board and myself. We want to say thank you and welcome to the Housing Authority. At this time, um, is there any public participation? Okay. I'm sorry. We're going to now have the oath of our new commissioner. If you will, as long as she holds her, and she's swearing the word. And if you will repeat this after me, I, Wanda Breen.
I, Wanda Breen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state of South Carolina.
According to the Constitution of this state of South Carolina.
To exercise the duties of the office of a commissioner.
To exercise the duties of office as of commissioner.
Of the Housing Authority of Florence.
Of the Housing Authority of Florence.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
That I will.
That I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of South Carolina.
Of the state of South Carolina.
And the United States.
And the United States.
I, Wanda Breen.
I, Wanda Breen.
Should not acquire.
Should not acquire.
Any interest.
Any interest.
Direct.
Direct.
Indirect.
Indirect.
In any project.
In any project.
And any property.
And any property.
To include.
To include.
Planning.
Planning.
To be included in.
To be included in.
Any project.
Any project.
Nor shall I have.
Nor shall I have.
Any interest.
Any interest.
Direct.
Direct.
Or indirect.
Or indirect.
In any contract.
In any contract.
Or proposed contract.
Or proposed contract.
For materials.
For material.
Of service.
Of service.
To furnish.
To furnish.
Or be used.
Or be used.
In connection with.
In connection with.
Any projects.
Any projects.
If I own.
If I own.
Or control.
Or control.
Any interest.
Any interest.
Direct.
Direct.
Or indirect.
Or indirect.
I shall disclose.
I shall disclose.
Such interests.
Such interests.
In writing.
In writing.
To the Housing Authority.
To the Housing Authority.
Of Florence.
Of Florence.
And such disclosure.
And such disclosure.
Shall be entered.
Shall be entered.
Upon the minutes.
Upon the minutes.
Of the authority.
Of the authority.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the Housing Authority.
Thank you.
You want us to shake your hand.
At this time, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda. Linda Bach Williams.
Second, Calvin Robinson.
You've heard the motion that has been moved and properly seconded. Are there any questions? Are we ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
The, you have the opposed, the right to oppose as well, the ayes have it. Approval of the previous board amendments? The public, there's no one in the public participation. Approval of previous board minutes?
Are you doing this jointly or individually?
Uh, we need to probably do. Uh, each one individually.
Well, Chairman, I move that we accept, approve the minutes for item eight, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
You've heard the motion. Um, is there a second?
I, May Holmes Live, second the motion to approve the minutes in item eight.
Are there any questions? Any opposed? All in favor by saying aye. Uh, the March nineteen minutes have been approved. Uh, February the twenty-second, I need a motion to approve those minutes.
February twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seven, I'm sorry.
Calvin Robinson, item Bravo, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. I make a motion that we approve those minutes.
Can I get a second? You've heard this has been moving properly seconded. Are there any questions? Are we ready to vote? Are there any opposed? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
February twenty-second meeting, twenty-seventh meeting has been approved. Approved. February the sixth, twenty twenty-four special meeting. I need a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes, February the sixth, twenty twenty-four, for the special meeting.
All right. Need a second?
I, May Holmes Live, second the motion.
You've heard the motion that's been moving properly seconded. Are there any questions? Are we ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The ayes have it. January sixth, I need a motion for January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes for January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I need a second?
I, Holmes Live, second the motion.
You've heard the motion that has been moving properly seconded. Are there any questions? Are we ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Fe, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four has been approved. I need a motion to approve November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three meeting.
I, Calvin Robinson, item Echo, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, move to approve the board minutes.
I second that motion.
There's been a motion and properly seconded. Are there any questions? Are we ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The ayes have it.
I move that we table the minutes, the unapproved minutes from January twenty twenty-three to August twenty twenty-three.
You've heard the motion, or is there a second?
Second.
All right. Are there any questions? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. The unfinished business, uh, the board minutes preference. Um, there has been some question in regards to how do we want, um, to take the minutes. Uh, we've been advised by our attorney, let the record reflect, that we don't need to be verbatim. We just need to make sure that we have in the minutes where any changes that, that is being made and also have a resolution, um, to support that. Am I right?
Just to expand upon that, what the discussion was, that we need to, our recommendation is that every action taken be supported by a resolution. That that resolution, proposed resolution be submitted in the board packets so that the public is aware of the action that's going to be taken. And each of the council members are aware of the action that's going to be taken. They get to ask questions, any clarifications can be addressed. And that those resolutions be a part of the official minutes. Uh, and that any other discussions will be a general account of what the discussion was. But the clear, the thing that we really want to make sure are reflected in the minutes is what official actions, what actions have been taken by the board so that we won't end up in a situation, again, where the minutes have been, uh, uh, outstanding for an extended period of time, but they get to be much smoother. And it'll be in accordance with the statute, everything will be in accordance with South Carolina law in terms of what you have to add in the minutes. Thank you.
So what is the preference? I, I need a motion.
Need a motion on that?
Yes. I need a motion to, um, change the form of the way we take minutes to just reflect the action taken and a resolution to accomplish.
And the general account.
And the general.
Everything in accordance with South Carolina law. So moves.
So second.
You've heard the motion, and it has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Are there any opposed? Let the reflect, let the record reflect that we will change the way we do our minutes. New business, approval and discussion of resolution grant, executive director and acting chair permission to sign the board minutes from previous administration. And what this is, is the, um, approval, it is asking the board permission. As you know, um, the former minutes, uh, that we just tabled from January twenty twenty-three to August twenty twenty-three, it was not under, um, the time I was sitting in the chair and I'm asking the board for permission to sign on behalf of the, um, the other chair as well as the executive director to have permission to, uh, sign those minutes, um, from the other executive director's standpoint. Because it was, some of it was none of what either one of us had knowledge of. But we're just asking the board to give us a resolution to be able to, um, sign those resolutions and, uh, minutes. The one to include from January twenty twenty-three to August twenty twenty-four.
Chairman, I'd like to hear from, uh, attorney.
Right, I just want to remind everybody that Commissioner Moultrie, uh, acting as chairman, is not signing these minutes in his individual capacity, nor is the executive director. Under your bylaws, the executive director, the secretary to the board, he signs the minutes. So he, and, uh, the chairman, uh, or acting chairman, uh, will sign the minutes as well. So, I think it's perfectly approved.
We're fine then, you say?
I'm sorry?
We're fine with him signing that legally stand, legally, legally?
Yes.
Okay. And Brother Chairman, I just want to ask you this one question. Uh, I'm going to assume that you were present at the meeting.
I was.
Okay, and you feel comfortable?
Um, well, let me say this, we're going to, we've tabled these minutes. We need to get approval for me to sign, but we need to confirm, we need to confer with legal counsel as to some of these minutes because some of them were missing some things.
And have those missing items and/or statements been filled in, or are we satisfied with that?
Uh, they have not, but they are on, they're televised, and so we just need to have permission. I can't change the minutes because I wasn't in charge, and that's why we're asking for permission to be able to change those minutes so they reflect what the YouTube channel actually said and those actions that was took in place. And, um, we're going to confer again with attorney to tell us how do we, um, change those from the legal standpoint so we can get them approved.
And, and, and just let, let the record be clear. The minutes have never been adopted, so it's not like we're going back redoing this. The minutes that have been tabled are all drafts. And, uh, uh, the chairman, uh, has reviewed some of them and believes that there was some information that would be informative to, to include. So, uh, I just want to be clear, the minutes are not being revised.
Got it.
They've never been adopted.
Okay, so we can do it.
That being said, then, uh, Calvin, uh, Calvin Robinson, uh, moved that the minute, the chairman and the executive director have approval. Uh, the acting chairman and the executive director have permission to sign the board minutes and, and fill in, uh, information gathered from, uh, video recordings of said meetings, uh, for accuracy purposes.
Now, Linda Bach Williams, second that motion.
You've heard the motion that has been moving properly seconded. Are there any questions?
Chairman, further clarification. Those minutes will be brought back for the, to the board.
To the board.
For, for, for approval. I just want to be clear for that.
Yes.
We got you.
We got you.
You've heard the motion that's been probably moving seconded. Are there any questions? Are we ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. The minutes, uh, the new business have been approved. At this time, we will have our agency report, starting with Creekside.
Okay, the board members, um, first of all, um, in terms of the Creekside residents of, um, I know you probably saw the news article. Well, we only have one, um, of the Creekside residents that were relocated from Creekside to the hotel. There's only one left in the hotel right now. They have a voucher. And, um, so we, we started with eighty-two. And so, in the hotels, um, paying food expense and meals and all that, now we only have one left. That person has a voucher, and we're, um, helping that person, um, find someplace to, to stay. And so, we, we hope to have that wrapped up, and that should, um, that, that will result in a great savings to our agency not having to pay all those hotel bills. Also, um, in our effort to get Creekside building back up and running, um, we put out an RFQ, and we have hired an engineering and architecture firm, nineteen nineteen architects, uh, to do a study of the Creekside building to basically determine what, uh, repairs need to be made to the building in order to get it back up and running so that we can, um, relocate, um, individuals in Florence who need housing, public housing back to Creekside. That's a hundred units. And, um, if you can imagine, a hundred units, um, to the agency, a hundred units, uh, that's a hundred people who will have housing. That's also, um, in terms of the bottom line for our agency. That's rent, a hundred times rent coming into our agency that we have not, um, been experienced. So we're going from paying all these hotel bills, now that's stopping. Now we're getting the building back up and running and bringing a hundred affordable housing available to residents as well as bringing in that income that we've been missing for a good while. So that's going to make a big difference to the bottom line of our agency. Uh, we've already, we're going to do some repairs to the outside. You may see the landscaping looking better. We're cleaning the building up, but, uh, and this is going on while the architects are in there finding out what's going on and what needs to be done. Okay, on to asset management. Basically talks about the occupancy rate of our, um, our housing units. And I'll just go down the list, um, on the year-to-date occupancy. Um, we have Pine, Clyde, and Lakota. Uh, they all at ninety-eight point five-three percent occupancy. Um, Churchill Apartments is at ninety-five point four-eight percent occupancy. Oakland Place, which is eighty-five point sixty-eight percent occupancy. And, uh, Waverly is ninety-seven point five-oh percent occupancy. Bridgeland, ninety-two percent, point, uh, three-three percent occupancy. Parkview Plaza, ninety-nine percent occupancy. Creekside Village, says a hundred, that's because the entire building is in, uh, mod, modern, mod. And so that's why it says a hundred. Um, scattered housing, ninety-eight point seven-eight percent. Pine Acres and Pampico, eighty-nine point one-seven percent. Joe Smith Villas, a hundred percent occupancy. East Crest and McCall, ninety-four percent. Um, scatter sites, two is a hundred percent. Okay. So when we get, uh, we keep, keep on going down. Uh, we had four evictions, all for, for, uh, non-payment and four transfers that were administered. I know board members always ask about, um, the number of units that's in mod. You can continue to turn on page forty, forty-one, you see how many units we have offline. Creekside is most of them, but with the, um, the sewer grant, um, you know, we had to put a lot of units in mod because of sewer and water lines need to repair. And so you see what we have with June Lane, that's Churchill. And so, we continue to work to bring these units online as well, which will offer a lot, uh, more affordable housing to people who need it. Um, but it will also be more, um, rent coming in as well to our agents. And so, we're, we've gotten to the point where we, we were, you know, we handled a lot of the issues and problems. Now we're coming back up around and starting to get to the point where we're going to, um, ha, have people who need affordable housing in those units as well as bringing in this additional income to our agents.
Uh, Nada Bradley, if you will, I know we use a lot of acronyms. Can you just explain to the new board members what is mod so they will understand?
That's modernization, which means we would repair. If we take a unit totally offline, um, HUD does give us, when, when we put it in mod, we still get a, um, a payment from HUD, a subsidy from HUD, um, for that when we put it in mod. And so we're making repairs to it so that we can get it ready for someone to rent. That's what mod is.
All right, thank you.
Okay, down to contracts and maintenance. Um, on our scatter sites, we have, um, two floor replacements, um, that have been completed. Two floor replacements that are working on, two roof replacements completed. Um, set the tank installation completed. And some cabinet doors replaced. Uh, in Churchill, we got one floor replacement. In Oakland, we have one floor replacement that we're completing. Uh, going down the list, I'm going to skip down, um, to the contract status. Um, of course, I mentioned with, with the sewer grant, you know, we stopped, we stopped the work that was done on the sewer grant. We settled that issue, but we did not forget about, um, bringing those units back online. So we hired, uh, we put out an RFQ, and we hired a construction management company, uh, Brownstone Group. And, um, their job is to assess, um, actually, it's Churchill as well as, um, Disney Gillespie and, and Cheryl to determine where, where we are in terms of making all the repairs we need to make in order to get all of those units, units that's in mod back online and rent it out. And so that's what they're doing right now with those, with those sewer grant units. And we, they've gotten started, so, uh, we're waiting on them to complete that. Uh, going on further down in the miscellaneous, um, the carbon dioxide testing, um, at Pine Park, Clyde One and, uh, Parkview Plaza. Uh, RFQ for Architecture, Engineering, and Development Services. Uh, Paces Preservation Partners, PPP, they're currently, now this is, this is wrong here. They're, they're the one we hired, um, to do our RAD conversions at Oakland Place and Churchill. And we're going through that process. I've already, um, almost completed the, uh, initial RAD application for Oakland Place. And then I have to do, um, Churchill after that. And, but they're, they're working with submitting documents to them, um, right now, um, for our RAD conversion of, um, Oakland Place and Churchill, which will be totally renovating those, um, those apartment complexes. Okay, now we're going on down to finance. On that's on, that's on page forty-six.
Can we go back to page forty-five? The last item here, camera update.
Okay. Yours is working at?
Right. As I've visited the communities, as I've been doing, and that's one of the problems that I hear. They have cameras at Clyde Coat that's not working. They have cameras at Oakland Place, uh, that's not operational in the areas that they are placed. Uh, they're having lots of problems with trespassing on the property that the cameras are not picking up because they're not working properly. And that's as, that report is as new as yesterday because I attended the meeting there yesterday. Clyde Coat, I have not been back to, um, because of an illness. But, uh, when I was there last month, they said that they had parking lot cameras that were not working. they said that they had parking lot cameras that were not working.
Okay, we'll check, we'll definitely check into that. I know it's, a lot of our cameras, sometimes they turn the wrong way, we got to turn them the right way, but then I know, you know, our police department also has the ability to monitor our cameras as well, but please let me know about what you, what you hear about that and so we can address that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, finance. As I mentioned last meeting, we, we basically from a finance standpoint, we have those, have the two accounts, the agency account, which includes, you know, our public housing and, and then we have our business activities account, which is this, what we call the COCC or the central office. And so, and that's the business activities, so I'm, I'm talking about the business activities account right now. The operating receipts, Greg Avenue rents are above budget. Dakota Crossings, slightly under budget. Okay, other income was above budget for February of twenty twenty-three. That's the asset management fee, which comes in once per year, was received, and that, that's where it's pretty much over budget.
Brother Director, could you explain, you said the rents are above budget, when you say that? So you're saying you have more apartments rented than planned?
Well, that just means we receive more money in than we thought we were going to get in the budget.
Right, so how do you receive more money, is that?
Yeah, we, it could happen a number of ways, we could, we could have a higher collection rate than what we thought we were going to have. We could have, you know, we could have, like with our offset and people who owed money before, we could have collected that higher, more higher. We could have more, you know, more people paying, so it, that could, that could cause, you know, us to receive more money.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Okay, legal fees remain over budget for the amount that was allotted for this year. Our travel had, was a little over budget as well. Here, we see the thirty-two hundred dollars for the Inspire training, but what, that's, that's what we paid out, but then, as I mentioned last month, we received more, so we actually made money on that Inspire training, but here it's reflected just the expenses. And the consultant, you know, we, we brought in the consultant to do hands-on, one-on-one with HR benefits, we got a lot of new people in the agency and then the hands-on training seemed to work, work best and that, you see how much that cost. I'm going to move over to forty-seven, because I like to look at the bottom line here. Operating income, two hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars is what we brought in and what we budgeted or thought we were going to bring in was two hundred and four thousand, five hundred, so you can see we brought in more than we thought we were going to bring in a month, but for the year, nine hundred eleven thousand, six hundred and forty-four is what we brought in, but that's a little less than what we thought we were going to bring in, which was one million dollars, one million two, twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-six. You see, that's where we are with the income, and then expenses, we were pretty much neutral. When you go down to operating expenses, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-five, and we expect that with our budget was a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-three, so we did a little better there. And then on the year-to-date, nine hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six, nine, ninety-three, two hundred and sixteen. So it's, it's pretty close, we're running pretty close there. All right. Now on our other side, which is our public housing, which is on page fifty. Other income remains above budget mainly because of hotel, above budget estimates for the year, other income includes work orders, late fees, collection loss, recovery, recoveries. We have not received, well, at the time of the printing of this, we didn't receive our capital fund operation drawdown yet, but we had, we did receive it in March, and it was for two hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. That's the capital funds from HUD. All right. Okay, that's, that's, I'm going to stop there on my financial report unless anybody have any questions. Okay, no question, I'm going to move on to my executive director's report. Look at the screen, this is executive director report for April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. And I, I kind of knew the, the meeting was going to kind of go a little long, so I kind of cut down this time, we won't have as long a report as before. On, on the table, you'll see the commissioner's role, which is, it, it came from, it is a chapter in a conference program book that was, was, was in the office, and I thought it was real good for y'all to have that, just for, for your reading. I'm not saying it's the manual that we go by, but it is good reading, just some knowledge, you know, reading on what your role is as a commissioner. I know we have a couple of commissioners who went to conferences and they had, they got that same information, so, but it's, it looked good to me, that's why I, I provide that for you. We have a lot of deadlines coming up, and I want the board to, to be knowledgeable of all the things that's going on in the agency that's coming up. We talked to you about our trans, our transition to paperless, which is through Yardi. This started way back in twenty twenty-one and then it was paused, and when they, when we had all the transition in the agency, I started it back up when I got started in July. And our agency, everybody in the agency has been receiving training ever since then, but we're going to go live with Yardi on May, on, in the week of May twenty-seventh. So we're going to end the old SAC system and we're going to go live with a whole new system that, you know, that we're going to use to operate our agency. On May thirtieth, that represents my one-year anniversary, that's when the board decided to hire me, was May thirtieth. So that year, the year has gone by real fast, and I know we, at first, when I was hired, we were talking, we talked about having a, having the community come out, you know, and just have a celebration, we were so busy, our head was so, I mean, underwater, we were so covered up that we couldn't, we couldn't get to it, and so now we're looking at trying to have some type of celebration around that time, around the year anniversary. Bring the community out and what have you, and so we got some of the board members working on that. Okay, then the week of, of June tenth, the new inspection protocol, INSPIRE. We got word from HUD that they're going to be coming to inspect five of our public housing apartments, Churchill, Waverly, Bridgeland, and Pine Acres. Now, they had, they said Creekside, but Creekside is one hundred percent in mod, so they're going to pick something else, and we don't know what they're going to pick. INSPIRE is totally different from the old protocol of inspection, so we had some training here this year for all our maintenance, to get them trained so they know what to do, and we've been working really, really hard with our maintenance department to get these apartments up to speed because when HUD comes in, they look at everything, they're very critical. It's, it's, it's very hard to pad, most people, this, this will be the first INSPIRE inspection for Florence, we did it in Cheryl in December, and it was, it was tough, it was very tough. So we're trying to, but we know more now than we did then, and so we're going to try to get inspection. These, this doesn't really count, INSPIRE doesn't count until January of next year, but HUD is coming in, I guess, giving us a, a practice run, but we taking it serious just like it's the real deal, and we're going to get ready and we're going to do the best we can on it, but we'll let you know how, how it turned out. The week of June twenty-fourth, this agency will have a HUD full comprehensive agency review, which means they're going to come in and they're going to inspect the records, how we're operating, how we say we're operating, all of our plans, which we, we have to submit on Friday, every plan that we have in this agency is going to HUD, they're going to review the plans first, and then they're going to come on June twenty-fourth, that whole week, and be in this agency, seeing if we're following our plans, expecting all the books, so we've, and we've been getting ready for that for some time now. So you know what we up against, there's a lot of work going on here. In the meantime, on July seventeenth is when our, our annual plan is due to HUD. So we've been working on that and you all will, the board will be responsible for viewing and approving it in, by, I think it's in the end of May, when you do that, so you're going to get a copy of that very shortly. Then on September thirtieth, which is our year, the end of our fiscal year, that is when the agency budget must be approved and submitted to HUD. So we're working on that in the meantime. Also, I, I mentioned earlier the RAD application, where we're going to do total renovations of Oakland Place and Churchill, which includes a lot of transitioning the residents, you know, that's a lot of work that's going on. But we've, we've begun that process, we've already had two resident meetings at both of the apartment complexes, and like you said, we, we have a developer on board and we're working, we're submitting all the documents and we're working on that. And then the other thing that I mentioned was the Creekside on board, and once we get Creekside finished, then we're going to have to move people back in it. So all of this is going on, so, and, you know, hats off to our agency employees because they're working, they're working real hard. And that's my agency report.
You've heard the agency report, can I get a motion to accept it?
So second, Leonard Barr Williams.
This, the agency report has been moved and properly second, are there any questions? Are we ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, I need a motion to go into executive session to confer with the board's attorney to obtain advice regarding legal matters to discuss pending litigation and personal matters per South Carolina court of section thirty dash four seventy, A one and A two.
So moved, brother.
So it's that.
You've heard the motion and it's been properly seconded, this time we will go into executive session. Prior to us going, we want to definitely say thank you Reverend Moffett and thank you, Constable Ms. Chiquet for coming to be with us in this board meeting, and we appreciate you.
Thank y'all.